This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Alpine City Council Meeting of May 15th, 2023. Call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Here.
And Mayor Walguera?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved. Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Walguera?
Hi. Any proposed modifications to the agenda?
Sir.
Approval of the minutes for regular and closed session of May 1st, 2023. Any issues, changes?
No issues.
All right, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address to our clerk for her records. And this is the only time other than the public hearing for the city budget that you'll be allowed to address council. If you have budget statements, please wait until that hits the agenda, which is coming right up. But anything else, please come up. Let us know. And I see no one here. Anyone on the internet? Sir. Close that. So now we'll start our public hearing. This is a preliminary fiscal fiscal year 2024 city budget. I open the public hearing and we'll have a report by Anna Salk, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. There have been no changes to the numbers for the budget since the presentation on May 1st. So I'll just talk about the tax rates that we are going to propose to levy. For the charter, for the city operating, last year's millage was 16.0373, and we are subject to a truth and assessing rollback of .9963. So we apply that against last year's operating millage. So you can levy 15.9779 this year for city operating. For the Thunder Bay Transportation Authority, last year's millage was .9957. There is no heavily rollback, same as with the city operating. And they also do not have to take the truth and assessing rollback. They have, there's a separate truth and county equalization rollback, but it's one. So, and that's, that's for, that is for villages, counties, and authorities. So since they're authority, they fall under the truth and county equalization. It's one, so you take one, multiply it by last year's millage, so no reduction. The DDA, theirs is 1.9812 was the millage last year, and they do not have a heavily rollback or any other sort of rollback. So theirs will be the same as last year, 1.9812. For 2023 tax year, if we were to take our total taxable value of $284,184,386 and multiply it by the 15.9779, that's revenue of 4.54 million. I budgeted for $4,300,000 in this budget. Just leaving room, because we don't collect every dollar of personal property tax. We do with real because we're made whole by the county, but on personal property, we don't. So there's some leeway in there. That's all I have. Any questions on that?
Yeah.
No.
And you intend to bring this back for finalization on June 5th? Very good. Okay, open, open to public comment. Any comments from the public regarding specifically the budget, next year's budget?
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I would just like to get it in the minutes that we need to get the proposed fence put back up at the cemetery. I believe it was removed, we talked about that, taken out of the budget for this year. It needs to be put back in and that fence replaced, the fence that was taken down at least be put in somewhere that they can keep it as, as good as possible to at least be able to copy the shape and get things rolling with some people that would be able to do that. So it's in safekeeping and then propose that and get that back up. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Angie. Any other public comment? Anyone on the internet there? Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to close public comment on the budget. Any written comments received by the clerk's office? Going to close the public hearing. Council discussion. Any discussion from council before we see this final on June 5th, June 5th?
I have no comment.
No comment, no questions? Nothing.
I will have to update the resolution that's in the budget because I think some of the millage numbers are off just a little bit. Some numbers changed, so I will update that for the next meeting.
Okay. All right, very good. And I have nothing either. If we're going to close that out. Okay, so I guess that closes the public hearing. I'm sorry, there's just no action, so it's a little confusing, but close that. And now on to the consent agenda. As bills to be allowed in the amount of $267,932.48 and authorize Mayor Walguera and Clerk Salk to sign via his approval of the budget amendment request to increase expenditures by $3,132 in the building inspection fund and reduce fund balance. C is the reappointment of Dave Knickie to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term which expires on May 15th, 2026. D is the approval to enter into an agreement with financial recovery strategies for exclusive claims management and the payment card interchange fee and merchant discount litigation and authorize the clerk to sign on behalf of the city. And E is the approval to enter into an agreement with Invoice Cloud for payment processing services and authorize Clerk Salk to sign on behalf of the city.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Walguera?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we have presentation here in undercover narcotics team 2022 annual report, and I don't see Detective Lieutenant Sharp here. It's listed that he's going to do the presentation from MSP. And his, his.
I'm happy to give a brief report.
Certainly.
On Stu's behalf. Anna had approached me, so just, I wasn't prepared for this, although I'm on the board of directors. So he, Stu gave a report just a couple of weeks ago at our meeting in Preskill. So do you guys have access to the packet? Perfect. Okay. So I'm just going to kind of go through and highlight some of the important areas that were touched on in the meeting. So on, of course, there's no page numbers here. I'm on the second page in that talks, that says about us, just a brief rundown of what Hunt is all about and who the board consists of. As I mentioned, I do sit on the board of directors, and I think the important part here is the member participation. Those are the cities and counties that participate on Hunt. And as you know, we provide $8,000 in funding as well as provide one officer to the team. And as you can see, there's several other counties and cities that, that do the same. Going forward into investigations. You can see in 2022, they had 59 investigations with the majority of those being methamphetamine investigations. That's the predominant drug of choice in Alpine and the surrounding counties right now. And important point to point out here is the investigations by jurisdiction. If you can see that 51% of the investigations were in the city of Alpine. So again, just pointing out that we cover, Hunt covers Alcona, Alpine, Mount Marancy, Preskill, and the city of Roger City, and 51% of those investigations, again, were conducted within the city of Alpine. So certainly money well spent going toward the team. As far as arrests in 2022, they had 81 total arrests, 50 persons that were arrested. So meaning that 50 persons were arrested, one person could have had multiple counts on that individual, leading to 81 total arrest counts. Arrests by jurisdiction, again, showing that the city of Alpine took the lead there with 50% of the arrests of all the jurisdictions. Sure, that's a good thing, but it just goes to show you that the team is very active in the city, being that we are the, you know, get a population hub in northeast Michigan. It makes sense that a majority of their time unfortunately is spent near our town. Searches and seizures, won't go too heavily into this. Just goes to show you some of the firearms and property or forfeiture items that they seized. They had 20, over $22,000 in forfeiture proceeds from 2022. And talking about the drugs seized, this shows you the street value of all the drugs that they seized. Again, pointing out methamphetamine, they seized almost $37,000 worth of methamphetamine off our streets in 2022, which is quite significant. They're also active as far as in the community. I won't get into all that, but the public affairs, they ran a campaign, you know, a teen outreach campaign as far as billboards and those types of things, try to spread the message of what Hunt does. Gives you a little bit of information on crystal meth. Again, that's the most prevalent drug in our community. And you're going to see that below the information on crystal meth there, the meth arrests. Unfortunately, the rest are, they stay pretty consistent through the years, that participation on the team is down right now, and that we're going to attribute that just to recruitment and retention in law enforcement, not just locally here, but in frankly, across the nation. It's definitely hit Michigan as well. So the, the amount of participation in the team is currently down. I expect that that will go back up as the numbers in law enforcement increase as well. But the arrest on lab charges has gone down considerably from previous years. That doesn't mean that that's not here. Just the Hunt commander pointed out that a lot of the drugs are coming from the larger cities that are being pushed up from Mexico and then are being trafficked up to northern Michigan, where previously we were seeing a lot more meth labs locally. Now we're seeing more of that traffic from downstate. And then the end of the report, he highlighted in Lieutenant Sharp in depth on some of the more significant cases that Hunt had in 2022. That's all I have. I can try to answer any questions that you may have?
I don't have any questions, but I sit on the board as well, so answer to it. If anybody has any questions, or if you come up with any, Chief Hamp is always available. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion to receive and file that.
I move to receive and file Hunt's report. Second.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Walguera? Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes. Thank you. All right, next up in report of officers is the first reading of ordinance number 23-491, which amends the city of Alpine zoning map. And attorney Pfeifer is for that.
This is ordinance number 23-491. It is an ordinance to amend the city of Alpine zoning map, city of Alpine zoning ordinance map. As hereby amended as follows, parcel located at 320 Johnson Street shall be rezoned from O S 1 to B 2 to allow for the legal use of restaurant facilities on the property. This is the old jail property. By the way, that's why there, there's not a jail there anymore. But I think it's a Quiznos, a Big B, and.
Taco Del Mar.
Taco Del Mar. So section two is the separability clause, section three is the saving clause, section four, in case the effective date. And that will be the ordinance change will take effect upon the expiration of seven days after the publication of the notice of adoption. This is only first reading tonight, so it will come back at the June 5th meeting for vote yes or no.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Bill on that before we see it again next? Okay.
Questions?
Thank you. All right, next is the first reading of ordinance number 23-492, which amends chapter 38, fire prevention and protection, and each article thereunder by repeal of same and adoption of new language in lieu thereof. And Bill Piper is also heading that one out.
I believe Chief Evans and.
Oh, okay, very good.
We brought everyone.
As you guys know, this is kind of a complex thing, so I brought my assistants because this is their specialty. So in an effort to reduce confusion and to clarify the differences between the fire code and the building code, we're recommending changes to ordinance number 23-492, chapter 38, as what's in your packets. Community risk reduction captain Andy Marso and current building official Don Gilmet and building division head Steve Hall have worked under the current ordinance but have identified conflicting information in the way that the fire code interacts with the building code. Due to these identified conflicts, they have collaboratively reviewed the ordinance in its entirety and request to make some changes identified on the documents before you. The first changes are in terminology to reflect current language in these specialties, such as adding the words fire hydrant or fire plug, section 38-2. Moving on through the document, we've agreed to strike out paragraph section 38-4, paragraph 2C, which talks about the sale, storage, and possession of Chinese lanterns. We do not believe we can reasonably enforce and monitor this requirement and feel is appropriate to remove this from the ordinance. These are not regulated by the State Fireworks Safety Act. The main reason we decided to make changes is in section 38-31, adoption, paragraph eight. As mentioned earlier, the CR and the building official officials have identified conflicts that need to be corrected so we can align and be more transparent when referencing building and fire codes. As you can see and read in your documents, we added as applies to existing building. We also added a sentence that reads structures requiring a building permit shall comply with the applicable and reference fire codes and the applicable building codes. Lastly, we added language to section 38-36, fire in the streets. It now states no person shall start or kindle a fire on a paved street unless approved by the city manager. Next, we looked at section 38-37, fire on private property. We added definitions and did a total cleanup of language for the use of recreational outdoor fires in the city of Alpine. The fire department, the building department have collaborated tirelessly in making these changes to better reflect the intents of the ordinance in building construction and fire prevention and protection efforts within the city of Alpine. Moving forward, the two departments will continue to work together and be transparent in enforcing building and fire codes. The ultimate goal for both departments is to make our city safer. At this time, I would ask that the council approve the proposed changes to the code of ordinances, chapter 38, fire prevention and protection. And if you have questions, I have my two experts.
Break this into like pieces, because this is pretty, what you've done here is pretty big and it's got some other, some, as far as the building code part, with the fire code and the building code, this has been in my, in my tenure, kind of a back and forth thing for quite some time between your predecessors. And we were one way, and then we went the other way. And from what I understand, we were more in the building code, and then we went more towards the fire code just recently. And so now we're, now, am I correct in that?
Yeah, the, the biggest hurdle at this point is that state of Michigan is still operates under the 2015 building code. In 2015, it references the 2015 fire code. It does not reference the 2021 fire code. So the fire code was adopted as a standalone document. If you operate, if you look at that as a standalone document, a building upon its receiving a certificate of occupancy is out of date on day one because it does not comply with the 2021 fire code, which didn't exist when the 2015 building code was written. So that's, that was the, one of the main concerns. Once the state of Michigan gets up to speed to the 2021 building code, some of that language may have corrected itself, but we don't know. We're still waiting on the 2021, or 2023. We haven't received a 2018. We're waiting on Lansing for that one.
Okay.
So it's not adopted yet?
Nope. Yeah, the state of Michigan has not adopted the 2021 building code yet.
Okay. So I appreciate that explanation. Is everybody else okay on that topic alone? Appreciate that. The second part that I think you went over, these are a little bit more fire hydrant, that's fine. I don't have any questions about that at all. I was also here when we, when we prohibited Chinese lanterns. And, and there was some data, some of it was Michigan data, some of it was national data as far as the danger of putting a Chinese lantern in the air. I'm going to call it a Chinese lantern, but I think it changed its name to be more clever, something. But, but, so I'm just gonna, it's since it's still in here. So I don't, at the time, I don't think that, that regulating them and enforcing that issue was any easier than any other, than any common fireworks. It's very difficult other than the sale because you kind of know if a store has them in the city and none did at the time. So it wasn't really a big deal. I still, I still have an issue with, with whether, no matter what the, the statistical data says, I still honestly have an issue with lighting something on fire and sending it into the sky with no control over where it lands or what it does. And so, so whether it's, whether you're, whether you actually have one or not, is, is no concern of mine. So possessing it or even selling it, it's not a concern of mine. In the city of Alpine, lighting it on fire and sending it into the air with no control whatsoever, I still have an issue with, and I would just as soon continue to prohibit it. That's just, that's my opinion. I don't know where the rest of council is.
Come up with a prohibition of the sale in the city of these.
I'm sorry?
Wasn't there something came up, a prohibition of the sale of these things in the city? Because I thought it was kind of contradictory that the city would say you can't sell them here, but you can, there's a boundary line to the township, go buy them.
That is correct.
We just boxed it all into one, one ordinance and said you can't sell them, possess them, or use them. We just put it all into one. And like I said, it's no concern of mine whether someone possesses one or not. And you can't really enforce that. I mean, let's just say you guys pull somebody over and they got four Chinese lanterns sitting on a backseat. I just don't see an issue with that. I've got an issue with, with lighting them on fire and sending them. So.
I guess that's what's hard to enforce. So if they have them and they light it off and we see it in the sky, we can't go and try to find out who had them. If they have illegal fireworks, they have the remnants on the sidewalk or in their backyard or on their driveway. I mean, it's really hard. And really, you know, when this law went to effect some years ago, we would be sitting at the Fourth of July, all those firefighters, and right across the line on Thunder Bay Avenue, we would see them go up. And of course, they're coming across. There's nothing we could do. We could watch them do them, but they're in Alpine township property. And, you know, at that time, Neiman's was selling them. And I know the previous chief forebush tried to get them to stop selling them, and they said, no, they're not against the law. And there really was not a lot of data out there that they have started a lot of fires or anything like that. So that's, I think that's some background information.
Yeah.
Well, and I can add to that, that we've actually had a couple land on the sewer plant over here. And this is why this all came, you know, we live in a populated area and, you know, we don't want to set anything on fire, anyone's home, none of our facilities. So I would rather see it stay in as well.
Yeah.
We can, we can leave it in. We have no problem with that. From Andy's standpoint, as being the community risk reduction officer, to enforce it, it's going to be hard because it's not like.
Things are difficult to enforce. They just are. A lot of things are difficult to enforce. But having that to say that they just are. So, so if it is Fourth of July in any of our police department or even a fire department, if you have the authority or walk it by and you see somebody setting one up, ready to go, you can just say, those are against the law here. You have, if you want to point them in the direction of the township, that's not my business either. But, but in the, in the city of Alpine, if the township doesn't want to, doesn't want to prohibit them, that's fine. I mean, there you are. We all know. You just said it. Then I said it.
The truth.
But I would just as soon be the leader and say, yeah, we're not going to regardless of what everybody else is doing. So.
So you want to just keep the language?
I think we should just keep the language. It's fine.
We have no problem with that.
And everybody's fine with that.
2C would remain.
Yeah.
There was a red line version and the old version. Second, second, three of 10, still in it. If you want C to remain.
And 38-4 be one B. It's, it's lined twice in the version that I have. But, you know, it's before the 2C. It's up. It's one B at the beginning of. Okay, and then let's down to. Okay, now down to fires in the streets. That's fine. Fires on private property.
Then, yes.
I read that like six, eight times, and then I read it with Rachel today on the phone, and I'm still really not sure what I'm reading. I'm still really not sure what you're trying to describe in A and B under definitions.
Can I take a stab at it? Open burning would be burning a brush, burning of garbage, things of that nature. Recreational fires would be a campfire.
Okay, can you just say that?
Yeah.
In here? Well, because you've described it, and for those that are wondering, it says, it says, "Open burning is the burning of materials wherein products of combustion are emitted directly into the ambient air without passing through a stack or chimney from an enclosed chamber. Open burning does not include road flares, smudge pots, and similar devices associated with safety or occupational uses typically considered open flames, recreational fires, or the use of outdoor fireplaces." So what you're saying is that this is, you're talking about brush and.
Debris.
Debris, a bomb fire?
Yeah.
A, a brush pile? Maybe even if all of that is necessary because, because Bill Piper would know what it says. And any attorney perhaps. Could you, can it, can, can there be some layman's terms added to that even at the end or something, just to say?
We can clean both of those up, take them more.
What you're talking about. Because then I'll go into the second one. So the second one, which is recreational fires. It says an outdoor fire burning, an outdoor fire burning materials other than rubbish where the fuel being burned is not contained in an incinerator, outdoor fireplace, portable outdoor fireplace, barbecue grill, or barbecue pit, and has a total area, fuel area of three feet or less in diameter and two feet or less in height for pleasure, religious ceremonial cooking, warmth, or similar purposes.
Even in parentheses, campfire, everything can kind of capture that from the layman's one.
I guess. But what, what, so what is that one? What, what is that?
What it was.
What it says is what it's not. It says, it's not any of those things.
No.
Right? Where the fuel being burned is not contained in any of those things I just read off.
So it, I guess the legal definition would be what we call a Class A fire. So it's basically wood.
Here it is.
We can.
Normal building.
But, well, I understand what you're, what the fuel is.
Yeah.
But this says that it's not in a container. It's not in a fireplace. It's not, so it's, it's not in a barbecue grill. It's not in a pit. It's just, it's just on the ground?
Yeah, basically. It's like a bonfire, but with building materials versus brush.
Okay, so this is a very, this is a small bonfire. So if I have, if I have a, if I have a, a contained solar stove or something like that, what is, what does it fall under? None of.
Recreational fire inside of a pit and you're burning wood.
Yeah, maybe it's just me.
No.
This says, this literally says that it's not.
That just came right out of the general fire code. So we're not making.
Yeah, fix it.
Definitions up, so.
I'm not smart enough to do that.
Yeah.
Because this says that where the fuel being burned is not contained in an incinerator, outdoor fireplace, portable outdoor fireplace, barbecue, or this says, says that it's not my solar.
Clean it up. We think the word not maybe was not supposed to be there.
Okay.
Give me examples is fine. And if that's okay with Bill, but we could bring back.
Okay, so if the word not is not, is not in there. Okay, I thought it was crazy. I honestly did, but. Okay. So if the word not is not, is not in there. Okay. I thought it was crazy. I honestly did, but.
What about burn barrel?
Oh, can him. So it doesn't say that in there, but yes, that's.
The reason I was looking, so if we could sit there and say that you can't do it, but don't ignore the fact it doesn't say not to do it. So.
I think defining the actual devices that were, were burning within is probably a way to clean that up too. I like how you've got in there the three by three, you know, fire containment kind of describes everything as far as like campfire that I'm aware of. Yep. And then I like the idea of having the, the two foot high level on it. And then the burn barrel, yeah, is totally different. Yes. Yeah. So I had every now and then.
Yep. Yeah.
Clean that up.
If we can, yeah, just be really more specific.
These are what allowed and this is what is not.
Just to make it easier to, because this is a, this is a topic that's, that's decades old. People want, still wondering what we can and can't do in the city. So I appreciate the fact that you're, that you're addressing it, cleaning it up. Um. Do you, so here's my other question. So recreational fire, and you mentioned that that's, that definition is from the fire code or somewhere. Do we want, in your experience, because you guys probably answer to fires now and again, um, too much smoke or, you know.
Noose in smoke.
Noose in smoke and things. Do you, do you honestly think that someone is three foot, a little big? Is that okay? Is that pretty common? Three foot?
Pretty common.
Pretty common.
You know, a circular ring of.
Three foot.
But it's pretty good size. It's not huge. It's away from the house. It's not left alone, as it says, and you're supposed to be putting it out when you're all said and done at night.
And it's manageable.
And it's manageable.
Okay. Three by three basically confines them. They're not hauling brush.
Okay.
In it, a wood, but larger than what they can manage at home with a garden hose.
Okay. Um, and then, um.
You know, just to clear, the, the noose of smoke, every fire starts out smoky, right? And we get called by the neighbor. We have to go over there and we look at it and say, well, yes, it started out because they had cardboard or paper and maybe something was wet in the bottom of it. Most time if they're burning clean, dry wood and we can see that, we have to tell the neighbor, you know, yes, it started out, but now look at it, you know, it's burning clean. We encourage whoever the homeowner was burning it to make sure you burn clean, dry wood, you know?
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I've never really always, people have always kind of yes and no had small fires in their driveways and behind the house and things. I just, I just don't want the city to turn into a campground, to be honest with you. I mean, there's a certain, as far as the smell and people, and you know, fire, fires everywhere and smoke, but you guys have been able to contain that to a certain extent with complete.
It's actually been really good. I mean, if we get called, I don't know how many times in the summertime, maybe three, four times.
Yeah. So this honestly doesn't really open it up any more than it ever was.
Absolutely.
Just, it just puts some.
Give you some history back even before I took on this job, uh, used to have to have food by your thing. So you could have a recreational fire, but they had to have hot dogs sitting there or marshmallows. And I think it was when Bob Adrian became, uh, the deputy chief fire marshal. And then Chief Fort Bush looked into it and said, okay, enough of this. If they can have a campfire recreational, they shouldn't have to have the food there. You know, it's got to be this size. They got to put it out at night. Somebody's got to maintain it. So you can't just let it go out at night by yourself, you know, go inside and, you know.
Gotcha.
Definitely we can clean up that action too, if you'd like.
Um, and I have a question. Um, this is in regards to Culligan Plaza because our, we're talking about putting in a fire feature, which would be a gas feature. Does that fall anywhere in here?
So that's, that's going to be totally clean burning. There's going to be no smoke. You know, you're, it's going to be perfect. I mean, really, that's if if everybody went to those, you would never have an issue, right? Cause you shut them off at night and, uh, they're hot for a bit, but they're not, you know, hot for a long period of time and you don't have the ashes.
And they're safe.
Yeah, they're really safe. And people are more and more of those, you see, uh, you know, the local stores, people are putting them on their decks, propane.
Yeah.
And they're very safe because you shut them off, flame goes out, shut the tank off and, you know, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Um, there's a paragraph right under those definitions that says that portable outdoor fireplaces are regulated in section three oh seven point four point three of the code and are permitted at least 15 feet from structures, blah, blah, blah. Can, I don't, it says the code. I don't know what code.
Fire code.
Can you put that in there instead of just the code? Cause that kind of threw me off. And if, if somebody else was interested in reading all of that, they would want to know where to go.
That's the only code there is, right?
The only.
Please don't.
Um, yeah, that, uh, and, and everybody's okay with that?
I do have a question. You know how you mentioned food for human consumption in the paragraph, open burning in the city is prohibited and moving on. However, it doesn't apply to barbecue pits or other equipment used for preparation of food for human consumption or recreational fires. Is that part of what you were talking about earlier?
No. So you can have a barbecue like everybody has, right? That can be close to your house in 15 feet. Years ago, uh, again, I don't know how many, probably 10 years ago or more.
The term small cooking fire.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Not having a bonfire because bonfires are illegal.
Were illegal, yes.
We have marshmallows.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So sorry about that.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Awesome. Excellent. Uh, good. Good?
Yep.
And you're going to bring this back?
Clean it up and we'll bring it back.
Okay. Second reading will be in a couple of weeks.
Whole thing for if you want.
Did I, and did I miss anything? That's an actual change or something different that anybody wanted to discuss?
All everything I have.
All right. Awesome. We'll close that out. Um, next is the proposed increase to recycling surcharge and amended interlocal agreement. And Rachel Smolinski is here, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. So the price of commodities fluctuates daily and there are many economic drivers behind the price increases and decreases. Some drivers include the stock market, price of oil, even, um, world events that influence the price of recyclables on the market. It's a volatile market, but the current recycling program has done an effective job of riding the highs and lows to bring recycling to the area. Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority, I call it N three M, is newly formed and it, it's made up of the city, the county and all of the townships, um, within the county. So that just came together recently. Um, much like everyone else, has been affected by price increases in fixed expenses, gas, employees, insurance, snow removal, equipment repair, just to name a few. There, we're transitioning away from Northeast Michigan Council of Governments as their fiduciary and have taken on the current contract workers as employees, adding additional expense to the already rising cost of operating the facility. They currently provide out of county permits to surrounding counties for residential and businesses but are limited. Um, oh, and businesses but are limited to what can be processed at the current facility. People from surrounding counties can bring material to the facility and they pay a higher rate than Alpena County residents to recycle things not covered by the surcharge, including hazmat mattresses, white goods, tires, et cetera. With increased costs for current operations and the need to continue services to residents, the N three M board recently approved an amendment to the current interlocal agreement, which charges $20 currently to each household for recycling and related educational programs. The amendment increases the surcharge from $20 to 25 per household, which would bring in another approximately $70,000 to N three M for operations. This agreement will also need to be approved by the Alpena County Board of Commissioners. In addition, each township and the city of Alpena will be required to approve the amended agreement. As N three M strives to maintain current operations given increased costs, they continue to look towards the future um, of materials management in Alpena County and for Northeast Michigan. Any increase in services, acceptance of new recyclable materials or curbside service requires an increase in capacity. Therefore, a new $7 million materials recovery facility or MRF is in the works. N three M has secured approximately 70% of the funding needed and has been working diligently to secure the remainder with the goal of starting construction on the new MRF in late 2024. Alpena's efforts to bring greater awareness to recycling and to bring a new facility to our area have gotten the attention of the state of Michigan and momentum is growing to get the new facility up and running. And as I mentioned before, we're, um, always looking to not only expand those services, but add new things to, um, or new products to what, products, materials, excuse me, to what we recycle. So later this year, through a partnership with wholesome Alpena, we, um, plan to start glass recycling. Uh, that's a perfect example of the circular economy that recycling can create. There's a product that wholesome can use in their production process. And so it's a win-win for, um, everyone. And then it also keeps those materials out of the landfill. So at this time, um, my recommended motion is below. Uh, I just, of course, the new stuff about the MRF doesn't really have an impact on the cost for N three M right now. Um, but it's, you know, something relevant to recycling that is happening with that. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, explain, I guess, just, just for our knowledge really quick of, um, how, how this works, if any of those municipalities don't approve the $25 surcharge increase or the $5 increase.
It wouldn't go through as far as I'm.
Yes, but.
As far as I'm aware.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we all, cause since we formed the, um, we all speak as one voice and the authority has already said, yes, we need to do this. So every governmental entity that's out there that's in the authority has agreed that yes, we need to do this. So it's our recommendation to each government entity to approve this and then we have to take it to the court.
But every authority has to sign it as far as I'm aware.
It do. Before we formed the authority, since they're in the authority, we have to agree. But before we formed the authority, entities could opt out from this. Um, the county said they would never allow that, but they could opt out if they chose to.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So each municipality individually votes as we are tonight and the county does?
Mm-hmm.
Or?
And then the county is a signatory to all of these agreements.
Do they have to wait for us?
Yeah.
And all the other municipalities?
Because this is under the county's waste management program. They have to have recycling. It's their program we operate under.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Somebody wants to propose the motion?
I move that we post house charge increase to $25 for recycling services as presented in the amended county of Alpena Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority interlocal agreement and authorized clerk Soick and mayor Walagura to sign the agreement. Second.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Mayor Walagura? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Thank you. I think I'm next.
And, uh, next up is the assessor contract discussion.
Okay. I have a brief memo. Um, it is time to consider a new contract with Berg assessing and consulting as the existing contract expires on June 30th, 2023. Mr. Berg has proposed a substantial increase for assessing services for the city of Alpena from the current amount of 88,392 per year to 120,000 per year. He has cited the complexity of the work needed for the city and the multitude of special acts. There are extreme, these are extremely complicated and require special tracking and critical review. We also have several options that I would like feedback from the council on, um, to consider for addressing an inspection program for the city. There is a recommendation from the state and, um, Ellen Berg is here, uh, to, uh, be part of this discussion. And he can talk a little bit about that, um, recommendation from the state to do, um, 20% an inspection program for 20% of our parcels. Um, he will, uh, I already said that, yes. So basically I'm looking for feedback on that price increase and wanted to allow some open discussion to ask Alan questions and also decide what we want to do for the inspection program. I would then bring back a contract for your, um, review and approval at the next meeting, hopefully. Thank you.
So let's tackle the, um, the, uh, increase in monetary amount for Mr. Berg's office and services, um, first, and then we'll go into the options. Um, first, you go off or do you want, or do you continue?
Continue, please.
Unless you're about to like propose something lower, I'll let you go first.
This is kind of what.
Go ahead. Go, go first, Mr. Mayor.
Um, uh, remind me again what's, what we've budgeted, because you're done with the budget. Is this increase in there?
I believe I put in a hundred. Yes.
Okay. Um, so I guess the first question is, uh, so, so just as a note, just as a side note, the city, and, and I don't, I imagine everybody sitting here knows, but um, city council is, we're, we're tasked with the employment of only four or five individuals. Um, and the assessor being one of them, uh, which is why we're at a public meeting right now discussing this, uh, and his, and his future contract to be renewed. Um, so, um, so I guess my first question would be, and, and I'm, I'm well aware of how complex our, our, uh, our, our process is here in the city. Maybe even compared to anywhere else, particularly in the state right now. Um, but even on a regular basis, uh, probably one of the more complex municipalities that, that Alan takes care of. I, I do, I would like to know if there's any room at all in this for us to discuss a, a lower amount as, as, or, or if nothing else to, to, uh, step into this in order to meet our budget needs rather than a, a jump now. Cause well, cause this is one, this is a, these are one year contracts. Have these, have, have you, has he always been under one year contracts?
Um, yeah, one year with the option to renew for three years total.
Okay. And how, what year are we on now?
This is the last year for renewal, right?
Great area.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe it expires in June, June 30th.
June 30th.
There is some strange language that says about a one year. Like, I don't think the intent was there, but I think it's supposed to be over in June.
Supposed to be three years. Yes.
Okay. We're done in the three year. This is annual.
It was last renewed in 2020.
Okay. So this is the last renewal on the original contract.
Correct.
And so moving forward, we, are we proposing a three year contract or another one year with two options to renew for year, for one year each?
Well, that is, I think, Alan, do you want to talk a little bit about what you're proposing? And I, I think that's open for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, and I, the complexity of, there's a lot of moving parts here and, and this is one of them that the contract was three years and it expired in addition to the other various pieces. So there's kind of a lot going on. Right now our draft contracts are annual and they kind of auto renew. We have historically did a, I don't even remember. We had a two or three year agreement and then we changed it to another three years. So I think we're at five years total. Uh, but this is the last of the three years. So, but this one's one year. If, if we wanted multiple years, we could talk about it. There's a lot changing, um, which is maybe part of the price changing, the inspection stuff. There's a lot going on really quickly and staffing, labor and pricing is changing very quickly. So it's really hard for us to forecast a three year agreement and be able to perform and do what we say we need to and forecast that far. Um, so we're, right now we're talking one year. But that's, that's the answer. The, the agreement that I proposed, uh, initially in a rough draft is a one year, or auto renewing, if you will.
Okay.
And I, can I ask a question? I think I know the answer, but we started out at 90,000. Was that our first year at 90 and second year at 90? Raised it.
Seven, seventy something.
I feel like it was 75 even, um.
Seventy five.
When I first came on and then in 2020, that's when it expired. So then there was, it was in the eighties and there was a little bit of a bump each year until it was up to, um, that amount, 88,392.
Okay.
For year three. But I don't think it was ever 90.
So that.
Not in mind.
No, correct. Yeah, it was not nine.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
I have a couple of questions. Being somewhat familiar and doing a little bit of research on the assessing departments for cities of our size. Typically, it's usually an ass, an assessor and at least one, possibly two assistants in a city this size. Is that, would that be a fair assessment?
Correct.
So what you're asking for the hundred and twenty thousand isn't just a single assessor's A scale. Basically, it's basically the services of what we would have to spend for that. Because my thoughts are is, and I, I did the math with Rachel today. At twenty percent of reviewing what we have in our city, based on, you know, even three hundred and sixty-five days, which we're not working that. You, you'd have to do, what do we figure, three or four?
Over three parcels a day.
A day.
Eleven hundred is what I was basing it on, that you would have to inspect.
So that's where I was confirming those kind of numbers when I was looking to see what, what size our department would be for a city of the size. You know, to make it reasonably able to do what their, the state now is requiring of an assessor's department. Which, you know, to me, three would be the minimum staff. I think that we would have to, if we didn't have Alan's firm. So I was just trying to put, you know, together what we're seeing, you know, as far as what the dollar amount gets us. You know, as far as what, we have an available staff that we get to plug into when we need it versus, you know, having a single person within the. Within the, you know, the office here doing it. And I've had conversations when we worked on, on the board with Jeff in the past and, and at that time, he says trying to get out and doing ten percent. At that, for him himself was almost impossible with the calculations and stuff throughout the year. So I understand that, you know, that's, that's quite a thing and, and I'm, I'm glad that you're open to discussing, you know, the, the price on that with us. But I just want, you know, council to understand exactly, you know, what we're getting for, for that price as well. So as we move forward.
Kind of took my sales pitch away right there. It is a sizable change, but that's, yeah, we, we, I mean, when we took over, we were replacing a little bit over one and a half to one point eight full-time equivalents. Today, you would need probably two, two and a half without fieldwork. So, yeah, to replace it, that's, that's where we're kind of looking at. And I, I don't want to say that I think we were too low. We're not necessarily asking for an increase. I think it was too low. And that's became apparent about a year ago and on top of inflation and labor pressures. So I did think about stepping into it, but I'm, I'm a little afraid it's. On the conservative side to not be so shocking in years to come, I don't know. But if, if, if these things continue in the market, which is the latter part of the discussion on the inspection. Extremely difficult to find people to do that type of work, which wasn't necessarily being done in the city historically.
And that would be a different fee structure.
Yes.
Completely. So, so just, so just, so we, yeah, just so we're clear. This, the salary is, does not include an option of, of on-the-ground inspection work.
The proposed drafted agreement, and maybe I'm in the dark on that.
So the hundred and twenty thousand is for base services. Alan, the inspection program would be above and beyond that depending on what option we chose. So Alan has laid out. A through E. One of them is to do nothing, which I, I, I'm hoping that Alan can explain a little bit about what's being recommended by the state and, and, I mean, I say recommended because it is recommended. But then that goes back to. For Alan's certified.
Okay. So we'll take that, we'll, we'll take that chunk in a minute. If there's, unless there's.
I was kind of concerned. This is just for this year. How much of an increase are we looking at for the next year and the year after that?
Right now, we're like everyone, I think we're following the inflation data that we're seeing. So I, I mean, to the extent that inflation continues above normal numbers, if you will, two, three, four percent. And we've, a lot of our units, we said inflation was eight, seven point nine. If you look at tax stuff, eight some percent. We did five percent across all of our units. With the concept that we're tracking the total inflation, but we don't want shocking numbers to everyone. You're a little different and because we're kind of adjusting the base in addition to that. So I don't know. We don't really know what the future holds. As, as the city manager mentioned in recycling, we're all getting pressured by this and it's, it's real, it's out there and it's expensive. So I don't know. That's kind of the other half of the answer on the multiple years. We don't know. It's hard for us to lock into something when we don't know what the, what the economy is doing.
And I think that was the point of a one-year contract.
One thing that I'd like to point out is that we do levy a one percent property tax administration fee, which is supposed to go to offset the expenses. We're assessing and then also for collection of taxes. And we are estimating that we're going to receive a hundred and eighteen thousand for next fiscal year. That's more than last year, but not as big of an increase as what this is, but.
What was the second part of that? One was for assessing and the other portion was.
Collection of taxes.
Collection.
So, but that, as I understand it, and Hannah, maybe you can explain a little bit more. Not all of that is committed towards the assessing contracts. So that gets spread around.
It's statutorily all required to be spent. And it all is spent on. It doesn't cover in all, all but one municipality that they actually maybe have an excess or would have. Everyone spends more than the one percent on, I don't know how it would work with the clerk. But the treasure compensation, assessor compensation, postage, clerical, anything to do this function, that hundred and eighteen thousand. Would have to be, which it clearly is.
Is clearly.
Clearly is last year and clearly will be next year.
We do also have a portion of Kathleen's wages and benefits gets charged to the assessing department. We reduce it. Not as much as it used to be.
Okay, anything else on that topic? You look like you're about to say something.
Draft agreement says that it would be June first through May thirty-first, but it's, it would actually be July first, June thirty, right?
No, no, and yes. I, I don't know where June, it's June first, somehow it's June thirty. I don't know where June thirtieth came from. I think it was an oops.
I think that's when our contract actually expires, but I don't know.
Our start date was June first, so the end date should have been May thirty-first and somehow it got to June thirtieth. So I don't know, but it doesn't really matter. Semantics on that, but that's why, that's why our date says June first, because that was our start date. But I guess it can be now July first.
I mean, that would make sense with our fiscal year.
Yeah, that works better.
Everybody's good? We're good with the date?
I think.
Are we good with the amount? Failed attempt to lower this at all.
We're thinking more of a hundred thousand. What do you think? Let's just go with that.
Let's just go with that.
Taking advice.
So, so my. Yeah, I, you know, I'm always, I'm always kind of hoping that we can make things lower. But again, at the same time. One thing I didn't do is do the math as to whether we had, still had an in-house person and where their wages would be. It would almost be a little bit difficult for us to even do that at this point, since it's been so long since we had an in-house. And whether that, and two people or not. So I guess my, one of my bigger questions is going to be, is, is there room? Are you going to have room to, to put this, to put one-twenty in the budget? Or are we going to have issues with that? And so we should. We should counter offer here just on the basis of the budget itself.
More, that's going to have to come from fund balance. Because right now we're nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars negative.
As I figured in the inspection cards, we don't know what that number is yet. That would have to be figured into this much as well. That is not going to put us below our minimum at that point. I mean, I don't know how much it costs to the card. Fifty thousand, is it another hundred thousand? I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe before we land, maybe before we land on this, we should discuss. And I, and I failed to, to print off the, the options, but maybe we should. Discuss the options of what we're going to do in the inspection process, because it's going to come from the same budget. That additional money is going to come from the same budget in the event that we do decide to do an inspection program. Does anybody have one? Yeah, because I don't think I can open my email in here.
I can open mine. You can use that one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, so these, this inspection process and, and excuse me if I'm wrong. And you will let me know and the public know if I am. The, the state recommends twenty percent. On-the-ground inspection of each class of property, residential, commercial and industrial. Twenty percent of each annually on a rotating basis. Which means if we, we have a card and it says what that property has and what it's, you know, it's got an outbuilding, it's got pavement, it's got a driveway. If it's a residential, it's got whatever residential things have to be fencing and whatever. Whatever's on the card that says that that property has, that's taxable. So, so, but we're supposed to go out, recommended by the state. And actually look at twenty percent of each of those classes and compare them to the card to make sure that they're up to date. And everything is clearly marked out. So that's what, that's what, that's what the recommendation is. We have not done that in the city of Alpina. We, the last thing we did that even resembled that was several years ago, we hired your firm. Before we hired you as an assessor to go to every residential property in the city of Alpina and update those cards. And then we rely in, as, as the future progresses, we rely on the, on the permit process that we have in place. To know what improvements have been made to those properties. So any improvement that's been made to the property that we wouldn't know about was done without a permit. Same as commercial or industrial or anything else. So, so we do rely on our, and we also rely on the fact that we have anywhere from two to three individuals that go throughout the city on other business and regularly notice anything of, of substance that, you know, like a new garage or going up or, you know, anything that they can see as they go by, because they're relatively familiar with the city, so they might notice something. So not being a requirement, we've kind of, I guess, saved that cost and just relied on the fact that we're probably pretty good and close to up to date, just based on the fact that we have these other things in place. So now. Due to circumstances slightly out of our control, we have been. It's a little bit more of an issue now with the fact that we have not been doing this. Maybe more specifically in the industrial and commercial aspect than, than say the residential. Which leads us to these several options that we have to either rectify that or leave it as it is. So. So is that a good lead-in?
It is. Might take off a little bit that the city's in a different position because of what's happened historically. So before, there really was zero documented program. As the mayor said, we came in and did do a full inspection in residential. So those records were updated and because it's twenty percent a year, that's once every five years. And as I mentioned, we have quite a few things converging, which makes complex, complicated, even more complicated. This is the exact time that we would start to dialogue with Rachel and say, hey, we need to start thinking about what are, what are you guys going to do about the residential since we're at the end of the five years. It just so happens that's right now. The commercial industrial has been mentioned a few times by our office of what are we going to do? So yes, we have the same thing across the city, but there's two different buckets. One is nobody's ever done the commercial industrial review. It just hasn't happened ever. So that's usually, that's where option A comes in. We have to start from scratch and figure something out. You're doing a regular program and keeping everything up to date, then you have option B. So unlike most municipalities, you have two buckets. You've got some properties that have been physically measured back five years ago when it's time to do. We've already done option A in residential five years ago. So you would qualify for option B because we do not expect a lot of changes because it's been five years. Where commercial and industrial, that hasn't happened. So we have to get through something with commercial and industrial. So that's where we really have you in two buckets. What are we doing about commercial industrial? Which you only have option A or E. Well, that's another thing. This is new. We've never really done this. So because of all of these situations converging, we've developed all of this brand new just for you. To say, what are we, how are we going to tackle this? What can we do? How are we going to do it? So we've changed language and we've come up with different options. But commercial industrial, if we're going to put boots on the ground and do that, we have to, it's, it's never been done. And residential now is the time to either get into B. As time goes on, it looks more like A, because you're starting over if you let too much time pass. So that's why I mentioned right now is the year that we would be talking about what to do for residential, based on the state's recommended. And the recommendation word is a strange word to define. As far as I know, the dictionary says it's just a recommendation. The state is, is more towards mandate. But not. Strongly recommended.
So residential, so option B is a recheck of improvements. And that's, that's the twenty, that's twenty percent of that. So twenty percent of, of, at, at thirty dollars per parcel for residential. Twenty percent of however many residential properties we have would give us the number of, of how much that would cost annually. We would, we would have to do that for the next.
Forever.
Five years to be back at, to have done them. And then does the cycle resumes?
Yeah, it's a perpetual program. I mean, it's, I mean, it's an annual thing that never stops really is the concept, twenty percent per year.
Can you? Since it's perpetual, can you say, okay, we're not doing twenty, we're doing fifteen?
It's a wonderful question. So there, there's so much going on that I don't even know how to explain exactly. We have to be able to do the work. We have to be able to. Walk out of here tonight or next in a month and decide what you want to do, whether it meets the state laws, the recommendations, can we do this? We have kind of tweaked this language, because I know we have to have a contract with you guys here very soon. And personally, we need something in something to know what we're supposed to do. It's already too late really for two thousand and twenty-three. This has to be done. We need to know in March. The whole year is planned, so this won't happen. To the budget, it won't happen this year. Maybe commercial industrial, we can figure something out, but the rest of it, we, we, it's, it's too late to do it. But I did change the language that gives us the right to, to, just to maybe not hit that. But there's semantics and issues with that, because we need to plan the whole year out, send notifications, staffing. So it's really diff, we have to actually, we're going to probably change our entire structure. Instead of a group of properties, we're just going to put them in a pecking order and then do slot slices at a time. And if there's some reason, we could stop as long as we don't get too far behind that pecking order instead of a bucket every five years. Because if we notice a bucket and we don't do it, had that problem last fall, where now we have a imbalance. So we have to change our database. So it's, it's a little more complicated. So it's it's a little more complicated, but yes, we've tried to change our language in the paragraph above it. That said, it's not a guarantee. We're going to target twenty percent, but we adjust it or may not even do it. But but at least it gives you the mechanism to know there's a program. It gives us the ability to adjust it and that you, you know, will kind of kind of at least have a documented program to figure that out.
So for commercial, we have to do it. There's no ifs, ands or buts about it. How many commercial properties do we have?
Hmm. It's a yes and no. Because ands or buts about it is yes, there are. Because the state of Michigan does not require this. The state of Michigan recommends. So so when you say, you know, and I get it, I get where Alan's coming from because it's a recommendation that they're kind of now almost sort of backpedaling and saying, well, we, when we said recommendation, we meant, we meant that it's that you have to that. And so and that's kind of what was made clear in an in an email that we received. And it and I took exception to that because of the fact that it doesn't say we have to. We've never done it before. We've never been. Here's another question for you. And so you 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 represent and assess for several different municipalities of them. How many have a program?
Um, lots has changed, a lot of things has changed in the last number of years. But right now, fifty, half of them have a documented program and half of them do not.
Yeah. So so I'm just, I'm a little, I'm still I'm still reluctant to to have to to spend a lot on this only because I don't know where it's getting us. I don't know if there's so so the state can say that you have to do this. And let's say the state and and we end up having, you know, we pay fifty thousand dollars, whatever, I have no idea. We don't look to, we don't look to recoup that. And so ordinarily, you do something, you do something and establish at at cost a program like this to to make sure that the municipality is getting everything that they that they fairly should be getting as far as taxes go. And then we redistribute that like we do in our budget every year. But if we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars and we're going to find out that that our residents and our commercial properties have been on the up and up and gotten permits for everything, other than maybe six grand, we're out forty-five thousand dollars that we spent out of your, out of your money looking at all twenty people that are in here. And so I I take exception to that. And so I'm going to try to keep that. I've already let it out, so I opened the bag, but I'm going to, what I want to do here is I want to do I want to do the very least. I want to do the absolute least that is going to keep us in check with the state and you not losing your license or whatever comes after that. And I know that that might be a little bit deeper than what we're going to be able to deal with as time progresses. But but I don't want to necessarily go all out if we don't have to. That's going to be my stance. But I don't want to get back into a position where we were when we first hired Alan's company to to reassess all. I mean, because literally a multitude of decades and issues had had transpired. So and if we could go back into those records, which I never did, when we hired your firm to 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 visit every single residential property in the city, I can't I can't say that I actually looked at the records to see whether it was even worth it in the end or not. I just didn't. Maybe I'm glad I did it, to be honest with you, but.
Like I can, you know, speak to five years ago firsthand on it, but there there was value to going through the records. We have to understand that the state tax commission has published a memo that describes compliance with the twenty percent. I'm not going to say I agree or disagree to anything that was dead in the last five, ten minutes. What I can say is that the state tax commission has issued a very detailed memorandum of how you comply with twenty percent. It requires notification, boots on the ground, plan program. So we've developed options, but some of them do not meet that memorandum.
Right.
Recommendation. I can only sit here and tell you what the state department of treasuries takes tax commission statutes, the general property tax act all say what has to happen. And we can check the boxes for you. And that that's about it. So in a city, it's it is, you have a robust building department program, which identifies lots of changes, which is one of the complexity items we went to. It's on the screen that it takes us a huge amount of time to filter through one thousand building permits of what requires our attention. It doesn't. We actually developed a program just for the city. So that might speak to our prior. That's one of my notes of why that number is higher. But but that doesn't, that doesn't check the box for the memorandum on the recommendation for twenty percent. Can we utilize different methods to do this and probably yield a product? Very possible. Can I stand here and tell you that it'll comply with the regulations that the state has put forward? I'd say no. So that's the quandary that I'm in or you're in to say, but back to your original question, was there value in going through the database? It was not consistent. Would I say we found lots of errors in measuring? No. Did we find inconsistencies in valuation techniques? Definitely. Were those fixed? Yes. Was it valuable for that reason alone? Yes. Do we need to go back every five years? According to the state tax commission memo, yes. Okay, I guess I don't have a different answer for that. I don't, I don't, I can't give you a different answer.
And you were looking something up for Cindy when I went off, so.
Oh, how many commercial?
How many commercial?
I do not have that. Trying to figure out how I can get that. I think.
I mean, I could work with you to get that number.
Yeah, I can get it.
Give you an estimate based.
I can get it for you by the end of the evening. Just not.
So we're, so option E isn't really, isn't really an option. Option to do nothing.
Just so for for your, I mean, if you're worried about the city and just the city, but we have other clients and this is going to be in front of every one of them. So if they are to your other question, if they're not doing a program, I need that in writing and then we'll have to react to that later. But we were we're kind of shoring that part up. And maybe to explain a little bit about the mayor's explanation of an email from the state. If you maybe want me to tie in some of that, I think.
I guess.
A little bit more. So the recommendation is a recommendation. The state in an email essentially said that because I'm a licensed, they've created a reg, an internal regulation that says if I sign off on a document that says we've complied with the recommendation. So reading between the lines, the recommendation is for you guys to do it, but it's just a recommendation. But in order for me to be the licensed assessor and sign here that says I've done twenty percent. So it it becomes a recommendation for you and a requirement for me. That's, I think that's, that's the way the memo. The published document says one thing, and then there's another document that I have to follow. And it said that they're tying the three things together. And that was, that's probably why. That's why all of this is coming to surface at the moment.
Okay.
And and we do that, and I will, I want to say it on this topic. You do have some complicated properties in the city that this is not normal. Large, very large, complex industrial properties. I I just, that's, that's beyond the scope of what I don't know what five foot diameter pipes are running nowadays for installation, maintenance and construction. There's just some stuff that is beyond the scope of what I could do. A warehouse facility that's a box fourteen foot steel sidewalls, that's that's stuff we do routinely. But some of these very unique properties are outside of, I don't, I don't know how we we do that. That is still something yet we have to tackle on top of this.
So so would you so residential, residential really should be pretty easy to decide. But it really can be check of improvements. You would, you would actually have somebody from your staff visit percent of our residential properties or or option this service. So C also, C is the only other option that doesn't have a note at the end of it that says that it doesn't meet the state tax commission recommendations. So are you saying that B, that B and C are options for residential properties and probably would suffice?
Yes, option C is an onsite. We are onsite with option C.
Okay.
So option B and C both require onsite. It's just a little bit of a different way that we accomplish it. Option D has value as well. Back to your original question, there's certainly a lot we can do. And we can do it much more efficient without the cost of boots on the ground and labor. But if we're not onsite, we can't, we can't comply with that recommendation without being onsite.
Okay.
Says we have.
And is that? So onsite photo, and I'm just throwing this out here because we, because we do have staff that goes and and is and are throughout town for other issues and reasons. Montiel's staff, for instance, are they? Are they able to to take these photos? Or is, I mean, I'm just trying to reduce everything as best I can. I mean, if I'm, if I'm at three or four Smith Street because there's a blight issue and on your list of twenty percent of residences that need to be inspected, it's right across the street from where I am. If I flip around and take a photo and send it to you, I mean, is that, is that a is that a possibility or is that just going to make more work trying to organize that?
Like it would be biased towards the properties that you would normally visit. So you would get a.
No, wouldn't there be a list? Wouldn't, wouldn't you generate a list of twenty percent of the properties? So I'm not saying that it, that it's all going to be next door to somewhere where inspectors have to be already. I'm just saying if they are already there or if they, or if there's an opportunity for someone on that, more than likely that staff rather than any other staff, I would assume to to be able to do part of that. Because your office is in Roger City, obviously. And so I'm just looking to say, okay, this is, this is all of our responsibility. It's it's yours because you're our assessor. But it's our responsibility as the city. And if we can do some of this in-house, is that a possibility to save some costs? That's.
You know, that that's something that I would have to evaluate and talk to Montiel about. Because I mean, the funds, some of its code enforcement, some of its building funds. I don't know. It's just something that I would have to evaluate as an option.
Okay. I just want to be as.
Yes.
I just, and I, and that's fine. No, and I appreciate and respect that. I just want to be as efficient as possible with the manpower that we already have. So if that's a possibility, that would be, let's, let's assume that it's not, I suppose, for the, for the for discussion sake tonight. But if something like that can be, can be implemented, then, you know, then we're just being more efficient with something that we don't really want to do in the first place. If that makes sense, I'm going to keep putting those little jabs in there because that's just where my head is tonight. But so for residential, we could actually do option C and that would be fifteen dollars per. Am I correct? And then with with commercial and industrial, we've never done any, we've never done any of this, like literally anything, except for one particular property that we ju, that we just did. So we're looking at it. So there is no other option because there is no recheck. It doesn't fall under a recheck of improvements. This falls into a kind of a full on, or would, or or do they fall under option B where?
So yeah, option B under the restrictions, it says it's only available if you've had a full remeasure. So option B and A are tied together. You go from A and then you go to B. Because if you haven't done a program, you got to start with A and then you can fall into B in year six, right? So you get through the first, the whole, the whole bucket in five years. In the sixth year, you start over. Now you have fresh data to fall back on. So A goes to B. You know, C, D and E, I suppose are still options for commercial industrial.
They're what?
There's still options.
Oh.
But we've never done A. I don't want to confuse this more than. What's that?
Get B, you have to do.
To get B, you have to do A. So really, I guess, A, C, D and E essentially could be options. But since it's never been done, we usually start with A and then we would go into maintenance mode. So you had, you have to do the project and then you main, then you're in maintenance residential. We've done it. Now we're in maintenance in year six. Commercial, it's never been done as far as we know. So can we add value with C, D, C or D? Yes, there would, there would be value to that. Would it be as good as A? No, because we're not onsite or at least using a tape measure. That has never been done. I would generally recommend A, but.
And we have, what, a hundred twenty-seven industrial properties? Was that the number?
Have that memory? About, you don't have that memory? About a hundred and twenty, hundred and.
Twenty?
Let me know your preferences. Maybe Alan and I can run some scenarios and get back to you with a little more of a budget.
Because that's twenty-four. Well, I'm just kind of, I'm so, so that's, so ten percent of a hundred and twenty is twelve, is twelve. So you're talking about twelve hundred. So now you're talking about twenty-four hundred? Is that, okay, so so just in the industrial, if we did option A, twenty percent of our industrial properties, you're talking about twenty-four hundred dollars, which doesn't exactly break the bank. Numbers like that don't.
If I were at forty, is what I, I just wanted to make sure that I'm right.
Forty.
Thousand. Forty-four, I'm roughly coming up with forty-four. A year.
For?
For option A on commercial industrial and option B on residential, so max cost.
Okay.
Was, I mean, don't quote me on that number. I mean, there isn't, there is a number, but it's it's really close to that. So if it's forty-two, still at forty-four.
Yeah. So we must have a lot of commercial properties.
You're at a little over four thousand. We're at about, I did fifteen, fourteen hundred between commercial and industrial. It's six hundred and five, seven hundred. So, yeah, I just no ballparks. And I can get that to you really quickly. I just need my laptop. But it was, it was, I know it was, this falls into the same scope that we were talking in the past. It's not out of line with what we were talking about. Everything we've done to expand it was to reduce that.
And we can't do option A for commercial and option C for residential?
You can.
Yeah. Because I think because that, you know, and I don't, I think that would, that should peel off some, some cost. Obviously, because option A for is sixty dollars and C is fifteen dollars for residential. And I think as far as where we are with that I, I think that, I think that's going to be, I think that's going to be sufficient. It certainly seems like it would be to me for residential to do C.
So option A for industrial, commercial. And then option C for residential. And then option C for residential.
So just, I just wanna in, integrate my non-sales pitch. We're here because we have to be telling you this is recommendation, it is very difficult for us to manage and do this. So we don't. We're, we're not here trying to say, please do this, don't get. So I mean, I, I have to tell you what's legally required and I'm going to do whatever we can to legally comply with all of that. And right now, we've, we've invested about fifteen thousand dollars in technology to figure out. How to deal with the labor shortages and the costs of that, and we're piloting different programs and technology and services that make this more efficient. So we're not, I don't mistake that I'm here trying to convince you to spend money on this, I'm telling you, the state says, here's what we gotta do. And whatever you guys do, there are certain other ramifications of doing nothing. But if you said, go A, yeah, we wanna throw as much money as this as we can, I'm gonna be going home. Going, okay, you know, we, we have to be able to do it, so that's, it's, it's really about how do we accomplish a task that's required or recommended. Or whatever you wanna call it, um, then I have to go and figure out a way to get it completed, and we're not. It's a non-sales pitch.
And then just to clarify, the timing of these, potentially some of the, um, commercial and industrial could be this. This year, calendar year, and then you're saying next calendar year, um, like in the spring you would do residential.
If you picked option B, zero residential would be done in this year. Um, if you did option A. It's just too late, um, we may figure something out for this year, so yeah, we may start something. Um, knowing what you're doing is helpful sooner, so we can plan, a lot of this is implementation, we have to set up databases and structures and plans and programs. And technology, so we would start preparing for it sooner, whether we actually do inspections in this calendar year or not. Hey, that's kinda why we reserve the right to do our best. Uh, at this juncture, we, we would, I would just anticipate maybe something. That's a non-answer, but, yeah, it's.
But it, but it's an up to based upon what you're able to get done this year.
It would be very minimal this year, it would be nonexistent in residential, I would expect, and it would be, it would be. We would do what we can in commercial. Um, if you did A. We meant, we, if we did A, we may actually, I mean, technical, technically speaking, we may implement various options below that. And we may do it in phases, we may actually start with option D and then merge in C. And then do the onsite later, so we may end up doing a blend, and that's why if you notice, the pricing is a little strategic. Uh, you know, one is half of the other, why, cause the labor hours are half. Option B is half of the labor hours of A and the price is fifty percent of option A. So there is a, there is a method to that, we've, we've done this for quite a while, so there's a method to the madness of how much time it takes to do each of these, but. So due to the magnitude of the problem, the, the workload, we would just start. But it would be minimal. For this year, but your budget is what, July first, so. That's the other problem we've realized too, it doesn't meld well, your budget cycle doesn't, we're on a calendar. Our contract is matching your budget, but this is all calendar year stuff. So we don't do programs in the winter, we do them in the spring, summer and fall.
Why?
Why not, so it, it's really difficult, so we usually start and we invoice in January, we do it at the end of the calendar year, so. And I'm thinking in my brain what we would do this calendar year, what you would invoice in this cycle in January of twenty twenty-four, I don't think it would be. Much, and it might even be a partial of A at only twenty percent of it, because we did part of it. To try and get something on the books. So we would work with the city manager on those nuances.
Okay.
So if, if this is your feedback, I can bring back a draft contract for your consideration at the next meeting.
I still would like to know how this is going to help with the budget. Especially concerning the fact that we're, we're talking about, uh, that union contracts and we're talking about the, the retirement. How it has to pay the added charge and everything else, and I'm seeing it in this number here right now. Is there any possibility but increase of the ones to unfund us state mandates?
That's all we're allowed. Um, so there's a hundred thousand budgeted, um, anything else would have to come out of fund balance?
Well, fund balance is only gonna last so long, so we can take it going like this. Actually, don't give any pay raises to employees, you don't put any money in the retirement and all this other stuff like. And I don't think that we can increase the, uh, the mileage rate or something like this for the city being sixteen or the fifteen or like this. So the money's gotta come from someplace. Were we gonna be dropped down to like twenty-eight percent of fund balance? With this current, uh, capital approval cycles?
Uh, so the, the proposed budget is taking us to twenty-three percent unassigned fund balance. Which is still above our, our fund balance policy.
Figuring out this stuff.
And to clarify, it is a hundred thousand dollars currently budgeted. Due the next fiscal year for assessor services, correct? I just wanna make sure we have that number.
I looked at that number, I'm. I saw a hundred percent, or a hundred percent, I mean a hundred thousand.
Anything beyond that would be. Calvin Mitchell's.
Alan, can I, or maybe Anna, can I ask a question, so on the recoverable costs at the end, end of this document? Is that, is that new or have you always done that? Anna, what does that cost? All of the stuff on the last page for assessment, printing, PDF copies. This, and what, what is that cost, was that cost for this last year?
I mean. A little despair at each other.
Anna and I looked at, um. What I, what we saw was, I think it was forty-five hundred dollars for our mailing, but I don't think that. You were charging a lot for the recoverable costs from what we could see.
Yes, so, so those are unavoidable costs, right, so those are postage, so that's, it's, it's, it's a pass-through, so, and we, it's, it's. I think it's essentially once a year. One, and that's coming shortly, so I haven't. It's, it's the assessment notices, it's printing, it's postage, so we basically just log all of that throughout the year and then I did separately identify it. I wanna say it's five to ten. We generally recommend ten percent of the, so I would, we generally, I would, I would recommend ten thousand on, on those. Incendials, but.
So when you give us that.
That's not new.
No. And, and I didn't know that until I saw this, and I didn't know that we paid for all that separate, and that's fine. Um, but when you give us our. We pay for each one of those sheets, the pages that.
Yes, the, the, the binders are gigantic and all, all of that is essentially built into those.
Is that the cost of this?
Yep.
To consider in all of this.
I, I would maybe offer this a different point of view, uh, again, not as a sales pitch, but essentially. And Anna mentioned this, four point five million dollars of revenue comes into your bank account and we do that. Anna collects it, but all of that is what we work on twelve months a year, and all of this is part of that four and a half million dollars. If we didn't do what we do, you wouldn't get four and a half million. Cause that is the millage times, all of those books and binders and all of that stuff takes three hundred and sixty-five days to do that. You know, with the state's regulations and statutes, so. We're often looked at as expense, expense department, but we generate all your property tax, not just for the city, but all of it on the tax bills. So that is local revenue, and unfortunately, the local city and township has to pay all of the brunt of that. But that's, there is revenue attached to those expenses in that.
And we would have these. House, when we did it in-house, we would have had.
The recoverable, yeah, you still have to, it's again, mostly printing, postage, mailing.
So, I mean, it's, it's kind of difficult at times to set up your, and manage your department when you don't have a department. So kind of subcontracting a department, where we would have to, you know, look at the cost, not only of. The individuals who would be in that department, the cost of their supplies and, and all the additional work that they're, they're going to do. Um, and it wouldn't be fair to say we have an assessor, you know, and say, where would we be because we have those plug-in. People were speaking to earlier, so, I mean, Rachel, even if, if, if there's a way that you can put together like, you know, departmental numbers for us. And some kind that we can compare of what it would be like, you know, so we have something to say, yes, so this is the increase. That we're looking at, but if we had this department, where would we be, you know, so.
Right, um, well, and I was even thinking about Matt's suggestion a little bit more, you know, that's still charged to assessing. If we would have to figure out how to charge. Part of their time if they're taking photos or assessing, you know, even if it's a small percentage, so it all goes to that cost. But you know, maybe we can do it more efficiently, I'm just hesitant to put. More of a burden on, you know, what staff already does, so that's something to, you know, for consideration. Um, and I was looking at the, um, projected or the recommended budget for assessing and it's one twelve. Eight oh five, and the contract is a hundred, a hundred thousand recommended. You probably already found that before I did.
Yeah, and I guess my final note would be that. You know, this is to, to Danny's point, well, yeah, this comes out of projects that we could obviously ordinarily do. That's an argument to have with the state, um, and so as we continue that dialogue with the state. Um, perhaps we'll be paying a cancellation fee at some point on these inspection programs, but. Until then, it's. Just one of those things. That way the cancel.
I, I wouldn't connect those two dots, so I guess what I would say. That's, that's for, we will, as we get started, we will be incurring large costs. Um, and that's where that comes in, there would be some time. You know, um, so I'm sorry. I mean, that would probably come into play in twenty twenty-four mid-year, so to that point, if there was a change. In direction in October, there wouldn't be. Fees, cancellation fees, if something changed.
Very good.
Makes sense, that makes.
Thanks for the, the discussion, helpful, I didn't wanna just bring you another.
Do you want, in closing, do you want me to talk about some of the differences that you experience in the city compared to many municipalities, or are you? Are you interested in that, or?
I get.
Doc, tell me that. Bill, tell me my ten minutes is up. Five minutes.
Five minutes is up? Um, I don't need that lesson today, I appreciate it, unless somebody else does. Yes, cause it, it's always interesting, it's always educational, but at this point, it's really doesn't, it really isn't gonna affect what we have to decide.
I'm not going far, I don't think.
You're not gonna go far. Okay, all right, so we will, um, we'll resume that discussion again at another time. Um, now we're gonna skip down to unfinished business, this is resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, which approves the application. For neighborhood enterprise zone certificate for Peak Services LLC and Montiel are planning and development and zoning directors here for that.
So, uh, last time we discussed the NEZ twenty twenty-three oh nine resolution. For, uh, the apartment A located above the Black Sheep, and I did have a discussion with. Uh, the Department of Treasury to talk about the short-term rental versus long-term rental questions that we had. And they confirmed that, uh, both are within the guidelines of the program, they don't stipulate that one has to be long-term. They do have a couple new programs which are unique to, um, the NEZ that we already have. Uh, which are focused on long-term, but for this one, it is, um, they confirmed, as is, um, the program has existed. There haven't been any changes and that would be within the guidelines of the program.
Nothing in there that we change your scoring on or anything that you've done.
Correct.
Is there any correction to this or change to this so that we're both balanced towards long-term rental versus the short-term? Which are not that beneficial towards the city or services or stuff like.
I think that. Short-term rentals are probably a larger discussion to your point from last time. On how the city wants to handle short-term rentals in general, in terms of, right now, they're just grouped into our rental registration program. We don't have any limits or criteria necessarily for short-term rentals that are different than a long-term rental, so. That's probably. A bigger conversation.
There's the, I'm sorry.
Our housing problems. Uh, a lot of houses got snapped up by businesses, they're not even in the city for the purpose of short-term rentals. So they took a lot more housing off the market for those who want to move in here and, and buy or, or rent a place like this, so. I'm just saying, it's worse that they're giving a tax break to someone for a short-term rental versus someone who's willing to put something into a long-term rental. That's where I would want to provide the benefit for and not short-term.
And this is where I'm just gonna interrupt briefly, that, that is a discussion for another time. Um, it is, uh, if, if there's any, and just point out to us very quickly where that discussion fits in. Whether it's under NEZ or re redoing the. The requirements for NEZ, that starts at what, the planning commission?
Um, so the NEZ requirements currently are in the municipal code. Um, and our rental registration program is also within the municipal code. Not that planning commission couldn't have a part in it, if we did an overlay district or something like that for short-term rentals. Those would all be things that we would have to probably jointly talk about as a greater group.
Okay, and that's, and I, and I appreciate where that's, where this is coming from, but it's, but quite honestly, it's not a discussion based on this property. And this is what's on our agenda tonight, so let's take that, cause everybody's got a little bit of input for that, and I do as well, but we'll. We'll have another time and place for that, and if maybe you wanna lead that off at some point. Um, this application though is not, there is no regulation or anything written. That has anything to do with what the owner of this property does. It's not even, it's not in the point system, it's not in anything, is that correct? Okay. So I honestly don't see any reason whatsoever to deny the, the application, I just don't, there's nothing, I, we. Honestly don't have any, our grounds other than our, maybe our own personal opinion.
That it violates the whole concept of the word neighborhood, which is a district, especially one that forms a community. If you have short-term rentals in something that is, whose title is the neighborhood, I'm sorry, um. Even though it doesn't violate the language, it, that still needs to be taken into consideration, short-term rentals are going to make. Lot, a lot of money, which is nice for those who can afford them, but this is not helping us form a community for our neighborhood, NEZ. Period, it just doesn't, and I think it violates that spirit of what NEZ is supposed to be about. So I'm dead-set against this, giving money to a cause for which a person is going to earn tenfold at least. And what's it going to do for the neighborhood?
I don't know if the argument towards what the property owners are going to make. Has anything to do with the intent of the program.
I think you can. Make some actions.
I guess I would just, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not a landlord of either short-term or long, long-term. And whether more money can be made on the short-term rentals or the long-term rentals. I guess is up for how much a person wants to charge monthly for a long-term based on weekly for a short-term, I, I just.
Well, that's a quick Google search though, I mean, yeah, that information's out there, how much money short.
Was this program, and Cindy spoke to it a little bit, cause she was, she was part of this, of making this program. So. So what? What is it, what is it, what is it for?
The NEZ was, it wa, and why?
The NEZ was, and why we started it is we wanted to get business owners to put apartments upstairs on their businesses. So that we were trying to make a community downtown where residents lived and worked and played, and to make the downtown an active area is why we did the NEZ. And it was mostly to get, because there were very few existing apartments in the downtown. And if they were, they were really, really old and outdated, I'm talking about.
Sure.
For the century. So, so it kind of kicked that off. I mean, it gives people, it gave people a tax break and incentive along with the DDA facade grant and, you know, and the, and the rental rehab program that we did. It gave property owners the incentive and the dollars to do that. And they did.
To, to attract more people downtown, to shop and dine and?
And live, yeah, and live.
So, so where does the argument fit in where if this particular business owner, property owner, had, had someone move into his loca, his or her location as a long-term rental, going to live there, sign a contract for a year? Okay, I'm going to get up in the morning, I'm going to go to work, or maybe I don't even have a job, so I'm just going to hang out. And I'm going to go to this place and that place. And then pretty soon, it's just going to get regular, and I'm probably not going to go out to eat that much more anymore after the first couple of weeks, because I've gone everywhere and so on and so forth. Or, on the other hand, this person rents to somebody different every week. So every week, you have that person, that group or whatever that comes in, and now everything downtown is brand-new to them. So they're going to try and do everything they can downtown. They're going to eat everywhere, they're going to try everything, they're going to go to all these different little downtown places and not get into that mode of what I do, what a lot of people do, is I'm going to start cooking at home, I'm going to start, you know, shopping at Walmart outside in the township, I'm not going to go downtown. So would the argument be that, that, that a short-term rental might even be more beneficial to the downtown than a long-term rental? One person for a year versus maybe 45 people a year coming into the downtown that might even say, I'd like to move here rather than just come here and do the short-term rental thing. I'd rather move here, and pretty soon, you have a permanent resident.
Well, that would be the problem, because there wouldn't be enough places to buy, because we have too many short-term rentals. So it's a circular argument. And how do short-term rentals create a neighborhood? They do not. And that is the spirit of this particular funding. These people don't become part of the downtown district, they don't become part of the community. They are in, they are out. And I think, one more time, that violates the spirit of this money. This is somebody who's just, who wants to build an apartment for financial gain, not to create a better neighborhood.
I don't know, I guess I just disagree. I don't see.
It's okay.
I don't, I just, I'll just throw it out there that I'd be, I'd be willing to bet that the majority of people that live in apartments downtown don't know anybody else that live in an apartment downtown or their neighbor across the street upstairs or down the street. I think, I just, so, so, so neighborhood, the word neighborhood is, 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 I think it's maybe being overused and as a, it's.
It's the title of the program.
But it's a neighborhood.
A neighborhood is defined as a place where one forms a community within a town or a city. And people who come in on the weekends or a couple of days of the week don't do that for us. They, they don't become a part of Alpena. And yeah, maybe they may want to come back and they might like it, but what's going to be for them? I just, I think we need to nip this in the bud. And I think it starts with programs like this that are going to give money to Airbnbs.
I don't like the idea of six years of big tax abate, but no tax dollars coming in for services for the city. That's why we got to sit there and put their, their time and their money into putting an apartment in for a neighborhood, for, for a community. That's where I would see the, the use of the abatement. But, but someone, it's, it's not going, that money they get, it's not going to the community in that case. I'm talking about from the property owner's perspective. They're the ones that's getting the benefit off of this from the taxpayer.
Well, and, and if I may, and I, and I probably started this whole thing because I struggled with this. And I am on the committee that assigns the abatement. That being said, I think, like the mayor says, we have two different issues. We have short-term rentals, which I strongly suggest that we start addressing that. But since we haven't addressed it, it doesn't apply to this application. As much as I want to vote no on this application, I don't think legally or ethically that I can do that. I think I have to vote for it, even though I struggle with it. Because the rules that we have in place and that we haven't addressed short-term rentals, we need to address short-term rentals and within the city.
I'd say that should be on our next agenda to sit there and go over this stuff so it doesn't come up with somebody else deciding to get in there to do the same thing that happened with Black Sheep. So in this situation here, I would like to see this brought up as soon as possible so that we can discuss it, that the Planning Commission can discuss it, and then we get the decision out.
I think we all agree that short-term rental discussion needs to happen sooner rather than later. But I agree with Mayor Proton, because I asked at the last meeting, you know, there are times during, you know, our service to the community that we have to look at what the rules and regulations are and at, at that time. I mean, I struggled with one certain vote that we've had in the past that I didn't agree with, but I was charged with looking at what was on the books at that time. So that's why I asked that same thing, too. And my question, again, last week, and I already asked it, is if, if there's any current property currently on the NEZ program, is there anything that would prevent them from going to a short-term rental? No. Okay, so with that and with the way that rules are written, I don't think that the discussion and our opinions would, you know, have anything to do with this particular application versus, you know, the future conversations that we have to have on, on the short-term rentals. So that's where I'm at. So I think based on the points, based on the criteria that we have in front of us, facts rather than opinions. If you're ready for a motion, Mayor, I'm, I'm ready to make one.
I am.
I move we approve Resolution 23-09, which approves the application for the NEZ Certificate for Peak Services LLC, located at 113 South Second Avenue, Apartment A, for a length of six years.
Second.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Absolutely not.
Thank you, Montiel.
Thank you.
All right, a new business. A is out-of-city fire inspections and fee schedule. And Chief Robbins, Chief, Chief Edmonds is here.
It's all good.
He brought it back up, just in case.
I brought it back up.
All right.
So due to, due to an increase in requests for fire safety inspections outside the city and also the county, we're requesting to implement a fee schedule to accommodate this service. Our community risk reduction captain, Andy Marso, is the only local certified inspector for these type requests, and in the past, have been completed at no cost to the requesting entity by the Opina City Fire Department. City currently incurs all liability, travel costs, and labor costs to complete these requests without any compensation for the service. Oftentimes, this request is due to an insurance licensing or regulatory requirement, and a certified fire inspector is needed to complete this inspection, certifying they are compliant with current fire life safety standards for building occupancy. Our CRR captain, Marso, is certified and approved to conduct these inspections. And he's the only one that we have that are currently certified and approved. Requests for businesses or individuals within the city would continue to be free of charges. It is a service we provide to our taxpayers as an extension of the Alpena City Fire Department. At this time, I would ask the council to approve a fee schedule as outlined below. This fee schedule will be effective May 16th, 2023. Where this comes from, we've had two in Presque that we've done in the past, and they've requested again, and now we've got an additional two. So we've actually had four just within the last month that are requesting for us to do this. We just want to make sure that if we're doing this, we're covering our costs and the city's not doing it for free. So.
Makes logical sense to me. Anyone, any questions or concerns?
No questions, no concerns.
Okay.
So is anything with the dating service starting tomorrow?
Correct.
And that can be done? That can be done? Can post into effect immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just checking.
Phil says yes.
Phil says yes, and we're go.
We're go.
This is going to be in the next budget, the schedule?
Correct. It'll be added.
They'll clean it up.
Yeah, we'll clean it up.
I move we approve the proposed fee schedule effective May 16th, 2023, for fire safety inspections.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is bagged leaf and lawn material pickup contract modification. And in his absence, Charlie Kijorski is here, and Steve's absence.
Good evening, council. In 2021, the city awarded the bagged lawn and leaf material pickup for 2022 through 2024. The service is currently provided to citizens four times each year, with two in the spring and two in the fall at $10,100 each. Since 2009, this service has been offered between one and four times per year, with budget playing a role in determining the frequency. Over the past several years, both staff and council have received calls from citizens requesting why we don't offer the pickup during the summer and early fall months. The answer we offer most times is due to the budget. Also, for quite some time, this was mostly considered a service offered to clean up leaves in the spring and fall. We believe that the increased efficiency at lower costs of bagger mowers may have influenced more people to bag their lawn clippings, leading to a larger population needing debris removed from their yards. We discussed this during the budget process and have decided to propose adding an additional two pickups during the summer and early fall months. This increase has been programmed into the proposed budget being presented. We have discussed the contract, discussed with the contractor, A1 Tree Service, and they are willing to provide this additional service at the same cost as the other pickups. I recommend for the city engineer, Steve Schultz, that council approve contract modification one for the bagged leaf and lawn material pickup contract in the amount of $40,400 for 23, 2023 and 2024. And the pickup dates are May, June, July, August, October, and November. The entire brush and bagging leave schedule can be found on the city's website.
All right, I thank you, Charlie. And to answer Dan's question earlier, this is the type of thing that gets cut out of budgets when things get very tight and over budget. So, but it has been since, since I've been here. I mean, everybody's always asking us to pick up an additional couple of times, so I don't have an issue with this. If we can fit it into our current budget, I'm definitely willing to do so. If I got any questions for Charlie or discussion points to make? So we'll need to approve the contract modification with A1 Tree Services, so?
Yes.
We'll be approved the contract modification, number one, for bagged leaf lawn material with A1 Tree Service.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the mutual aid and assistance agreement. And again, Charlie is here for that.
So the Michigan Department of, or, sorry, the Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle, has reached out through the city's, City of Alpena's water, wastewater utility operator, Violia, about joining the Michigan Water Wastewater Agency Response Network, or MYWARN. MYWARN is a mutual aid program that was established to provide a method whereby water wastewater utilities, together with public works agencies, sustaining physical damage from natural or man-made disasters, may obtain emergency assistance from other wastewater wastewater utilities and public works agencies in the form of personnel, equipment, and material, and other associated services necessary. Through the MYWARN program, members shall coordinate voluntary response activities and shall share voluntary resources during emergencies and other events. In other words, as a member, the city has no true obligation to respond to requests for assistance. The decision would be based on availability of city personnel and equipment. Additionally, the, the requesting member shall reimburse the responding member for any personal equipment, materials, or supplies utilized. After reviewing the MYWARN brochure and mutual aid agreement, city staff agrees that becoming a member of MYWARN would work like an insurance policy for the City of Alpena and provide a chance to aid other members in times of disaster. Staff also reached out to the city of Rogers City, who is one of three members in northern lower Michigan. And they became a member in 2020. And to date, have not had to request assistance or respond, respond to a request. So they joined as an insurance policy because they had limited personnel. So it is my recommendation for the city engineer, Steve Schultz, that city council adopt the attached Resolution 2023-10 to authorize entering into a mutual aid and assistance agreement with, with the Michigan Water Wastewater Agency Response Network and to authorize the execution of the agreement by Rachel Smolinski, city manager.
Charlie, Bill, did you have an opportunity to review the?
I did.
No issues with the resolution?
No, sir.
And it says director of the city as well, but I'm assuming that they meant the city manager. So I don't have any other questions or issues.
No, I don't. So I move we adopt Resolution 2023-10.
Second.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson? And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion key.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Alpena Marina Gas and Fuel Bid Recommendations. And Harbor Masters, Smolinski is.
On May 9th, the city rebid the purchase of delivery of recreational gas and diesel for the City of Alpena Marina. The products are sold dockside by the city as part of the Marina operations. Bid documents were sent to five firms with two bids received. The results of the bids are posted below. Because of the continuing fluctuation of recreational gas and diesel fuel, the suppliers are requested to give us a base bid at the time of the bid and based on their markup of these products at the time of delivery. In addition, prices are also requested for below minimum after-hours, Sundays, holidays, and other deliveries. Blarney Castle was low bidder with a markup of 17 and a half cents per gallon delivered to the Marina. Crystal Flash also provided the same price as its original bid. In addition, this price was still below the state purchasing program price of 25 to 35 cents per gallon. One of the other contractors or providers contacted us to decline the bid, but requested remain on the bid list for future bidding opportunities. Additionally, we spoke to another one of the vendors and said they were unable to bid at this time. We have since found out that they merged with the bidder that did not provide us with a quote. It is therefore my recommendation that, as a harbor master, to award the supply and delivery of the recreational gas and diesel fuel for the Alpena Marina to Blarney Castle of Bear Lake for the marked-up price of 0.175 cents per gallon based on the delivery at the time, price of delivery at the time.
That should do. I don't have anything, anybody, any questions, issues, no?
I move that we award the supply and delivery of recreation gas and diesel fuel for the City of Alpena Marina to Blarney Castle of Bear Lake, Michigan. award the supply and delivery of recreation gas and diesel fuel for the City of Alpena Marina to Blarney Castle of Bear Lake, Michigan for the markup of seven, pardon me, 0.175 plus base price at the time of delivery.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the Downtown Development Authority Boundary Expansion Update, and Anna Gentry is here for that.
Good evening. So I just wanted to give an update on the DDA Boundary Expansion. And after talking to Rachel within the last few weeks, it was her recommendation to both give an update and then have the opportunity for any comments, as well as some discussion about how best to move forward. So since the public hearing in December, we have been working with the Alpena County Commissioners to determine their contribution to the expansion as they opted out of allowing the capture of their taxes within the expanded boundary under the new TIF plan. So at the county's April 27 meeting, the county commissioners voted to approve a services agreement with the DDA that would be in lieu of a tax capture in the new district. So they did vote to contribute 5,000 per calendar year with a prorated $2,500 rate for the remainder of this year for the next five years. So this is more than the original tax capture would have been, which would allow more immediate investment back into the district. When the contract expires in five years, we would go back to them. This would be beyond the terms of the existing commissioners, which is why they proposed a five-year term to review the terms and progress in the district. Regarding residential parcels, it is still our recommendation to include those residentially zoned parcels in the expanded district, and those are only along Chisholm Street and North Second Avenue. These are non-conforming parcels in a business district, and we believe it would serve them a long-term benefit to be included now instead of having to go back through this process to re-add those parcels back in. However, we are proposing as part of the adoption that any property owner who owns a residentially zoned parcel in the new district could get their 1.9812, or whatever the rate is, for the special assessment reimbursed to them as long as the parcel remains residentially zoned. And this is something that Beckett and Raider, the firm we're working on, working with, has seen happen in other DA districts. And we believe that this would address any concerns about residential parcels that are remaining in the district while also allowing these parcels to benefit from being the DDA if they do change in use. So as far as next steps go, the ordinance adopting the new boundaries would need to be adopted in early June, which is probably beyond the timeline of what we could do, to be levied on the summer 2023 tax bill. However, the first TIF could still be collected in March 2024 from the, a new December 2022 base value of the district. So Beckett and Raider is drafting what that ordinance would look like for review. And then based on how discussions go, I'm working with Anna and Rachel to determine a timeline of that reading if council wants to continue moving forward with the adoption of the boundaries. I also wanted to note that since I last presented, we were recently awarded a $450,000 grant through the MEDC to supplement our DDA facade improvement grant program. So this is something that right now is only open to parcels in our current district. But if the expansion goes through, this is just one, I think, example of how these MEDC funds can really be levied in the new district. And this does have like a two-year out time period, but we were just alerted recently. So I do appreciate your support throughout this project and this process that's been about a year plus in advance so far. Our committee was happy with what the county had agreed to, even though a services agreement is kind of an interesting way to go about it. But I hope that, you know, you're still consider approving the expansion, that we can move forward with perhaps the ordinance readings. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or if there are any particular kind of discussion points right now that, that you guys wanted to have.
So the county requested this list of grants that you either got or applied for. They requested that after they entered into the agreement?
Before.
Oh, before.
Yeah, and I haven't signed that agreement yet since I think it's based on the fact that the boundary gets expanded. But they did approve that, their full board. So that was just an informational piece as they were looking at kind of what the impact could be, yeah, of having these, having the expansion go forward.
So there, I just want to get, I wasn't there, so I don't, I haven't really discussed it with any of them. But so their motivation to enter into a contract, a monetary contract with the DDA, which was for more than their tax capture would have been, was more of a, of a short-term agreement thing than to enter into something long-term? So it wasn't necessarily monetary because they'll be giving up more than they would have monetarily?
Yeah, the main discussion they had is they were, they didn't like the idea of allowing the capture on voter-approved millages for other causes, like the library or the rack, even though that's just the, that's just how DDAs are structured with TIF plans. So that was kind of the genesis of us like, if they don't want to approach this in a tax capture from their other millages, this is more of like what, how they mimic what they offer target, Alpena as well, for a set amount of services that we provide that would then be expanded into the new district as well. So that's kind of the, their, their reasoning of entering a more, you know, we provide these services from MEDC to grant writing, to economic development, to business recruitment. And then in exchange, they contribute a flat amount. But they didn't want to enter into an agreement that was beyond the terms of their current commissioners for something like this.
Okay. Because I've, and I've even discussed with you and maybe a bit here as well. I do have a little bit of an issue with specific millages that were voted on by municipal, or by the residents and wanted that, that particular capture to go to these very specific things. And the city has, remind me, the city has three? City-related? There's a county, library doesn't have anything to do with. County.
Right.
City. You have three?
Let me fill out, I have somewhere in my file which ones.
Many? Are they all county? I keep looking at you because you're like.
Yeah, it's just the operating.
One extra voted. So that we start. Transport authority. Yeah.
Yeah.
So just the city operating and then the extra voted for one.
And then there's ACC who did not.
Right.
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 Right, so, so there aren't any, there aren't any specific millages that are controlled by the city? That's all. Because I guess I'm, I mean, it's not for debate here, but I'm just maybe surprised that they didn't just ask you to just pull those out.
Yeah.
That's what I would have asked. That's kind of what I had kind of asked all along, but it's not my place. I'm assuming it's more of a place of the county who had asked that.
And that was one of the options that we, we said is, you know, this, the expansion, like, yes, the tax capture allows projects to happen, and that's really key piece, but why not just allow the capture of the operating millage? And, and, or opt into that one and then just allow the other ones not to be captured? And that would have been a, a fine agreement. And I will point out, they still could opt in to fund it. I do not think that is feasible, but just how the timing works of the expansion is that the taxing jurisdictions have 60 days to opt out, but they could opt in at any point before or after it's adopted. So again, I don't think that's something that would happen with the county, but.
I don't know.
I don't know.
So they, so they, I'm sorry, I won't use up all the questions.
That's okay.
Okay, so, so now, so the next steps. You can bring this back to, to this board at any time, and we can, and we can now vote to implement the expansion or vote not to implement the expansion. So if we vote to implement the expansion of the DDA as proposed, and so now the county is the only other jurisdiction, so they, they have an option within the next 60 days to totally opt in if they want to.
They could at any point.
So there's no.
Right.
Window for.
Right, it was just the opting out was.
Okay, because that was part of my next question. Okay, so, so currently, if we approve it, then they've, they've already pre-approved their contribution.
Right.
In the, in the event that we approve. So that part is done if we approve the expansion. They approve five years of, of.
Is it five years? Because in the contract that I have, it's from July 1, 2023 to December 31, 2027, which would actually be three and a half years. That's I have.
Okay, I'll have to double check that.
Okay.
They've been talking about a five-year service agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah. For that.
They don't want to sign that one yet.
Yeah.
So for that term, whether it's that term or the, for that, whatever that term is. And so, so let's just say that it's, that it's pick a date. Let's say it's that date. When that date comes to the end and they don't renew, then you're, then, then the DDA is back to just operating on the funds from city.
Correct.
Taxes. And is that something that, I mean, obviously you wouldn't be here if that wasn't something that you've considered and you're okay with?
Yeah, I mean, in an ideal, yeah, I mean, in an ideal world, whether I'm here, someone else is. But in an ideal world, you know, they would have opted into the capture of the taxes.
Because that is a 30-year plan, and as we've seen, it's taken 30 years to even get our current budget to a point where you have a full-time director. So I think like from a philosophical standpoint, that would have been ideal. But we would hope that with the expansion, the county commissioners would see that this is a really beneficial thing to invest in and renew it for more, you know, for additional years beyond that five years.
Okay.
Yeah.
For your question about the term, so if the DDA millage is collected in the summertime, so five years would be through tax year 27, it'd be collected in the summer of 27, right? 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, five years. So I'm thinking that it only goes to you this summer?
Yeah, well, yeah, that would make sense because they're, they were doing theirs on a calendar year. And 2023 would be the first year, but it would just be half of the year. Yeah.
Okay. How do you? Does it matter? So you have the current DDA, and it's been expanded a few times. And then this is, this expansion. So if this gets approved, is there any difference for your funding and what you fund as far as the expansion? Or is it all just one, one DDA again?
So it would be one DDA, but when we get our tax settlement, we get a lovely spreadsheet from Alan of the different districts and what amount is from each of them each year based on that current tax year. So like, logistically, it all goes into the same DDA, but we've talked about at a board of making sure that those funds are somewhat separated because the 81 district, you know, has been contributing to the expansion, so to say, or to the DDA for 40 years. So that's the bulk of the funding. But then we would take that new number, whatever it is in the first year, and that would be the amount that would be, you know, reinvested through two different programs there.
This would open up all the funding and grant availability and all of the other services that the DDA can provide and that other grants look to as being part of the DDA, that all of that would be opened up as well.
Right. Yeah, and that's a big, that's a big piece of this is, you know, the MEDC only really looks at projects within a DDA district unless they're very, very close by. So, but priority would go to projects that are in the DDA district. So by opening, you know, the expansion up is now all of a sudden, you know, those additional properties on North Second Avenue, they have availability for match-and-main programs through some of the bigger grants through the MEDC, this new facade program that right now they just don't really look at those types of projects. So that's a really big piece, even outside of our current funding, is that these state funds would now be allowed.
Local funding is a small piece of that.
Right. Exactly.
Can I say a few things? First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who's worked on the expansion. I know a lot of work has gone into this. I supported it from the beginning as long as the rules were the same for everyone. Because if it, if the city, current DDA can't support expansion, the current DDA and anyone in the current DDA, for many, many years, we started with nothing. Nothing, we had nothing. It's taken a long time to get where we are. I don't think that the current DDA should supplement the expansion. I think if there's things like the $450,000 grant that you got, which is absolutely fantastic. We still have work in the current DDA, and these people have supported the current DDA. They have hung in there with us. They have opened businesses. And to dilute that, that funding mechanism to, to a larger portion without everyone operating under the same rule, I don't think it's fair. Because if you look at this contract, and I've read it several times, scope of services that the county has put in here, and they can opt out at any time if they call you in and they're not happy with what you're doing. The scope of services that they expect to be done in the next five years, we couldn't have possibly got done in the current DDA because a lot of it we're still working on. But they have a list here that's extensive that they expect to be done with their contribution. And at any point, they can opt out. And if we, if we approve the expansion, that means that this DDA will fund all of it. The city will fund all of it. And without the county's input in the expansion, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. My hope is that the commissioners come back and look at this. Economic development, if, if we expanded, there's opportunity for it. There'll be no scope of services that direct you to do what they've directed in this scope of services because I'm telling you, this will take away from what you can actually do in the current DDA because this will keep you hopping for a long time to try to get the $5,000. For me, it doesn't work. It doesn't work. My hope is, this is my hope, is that the business owners that really want the expansion to go, go back to the commissioners and say, this is the way this DDA has functioned. It works. There are the rules that the state has put forward for us to operate under. The college came here and said they were for this. They didn't ask to oppose. The library never came and said, hey, we don't want to do this. So why? I don't understand why the commissioners have done this. I don't get it. I don't get it. And I don't think that the current DDA should suffer if we do the expansion because they can opt out of this at any time. And there's no, nothing to say that after five years that they'll continue.
Yeah, and that's, that's my biggest fear, that, that, well, A, I mean, that's, this isn't comparable to what the DDA does. But my biggest fear is that if this gets approved by the city council and the commissioners are under no, they're, they're, they have, they're under no obligation whatsoever. And so if they discontinue this, either at the end of the contract or prior to that, I, I just don't see where that, that's a, that's a huge expansion, which is actually part of the complaint sometimes, that's how big it is. But I get it, it's, it's big. We're going big and that's fine. But that's a very big expansion to be, to, of improvements to rest on the shoulders of, of everyone else. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, you're not here for our decision tonight.
Right.
But thankfully. But, but it, but it's really tough, and I don't know how to address it.
I think that's something like Rachel and I briefly talked about is like having more formal feedback to go back to the county with because all that has been, well, you guys got to kind of make a decision before it comes back to the city for any discussion. So I think that's really helpful to at least have some points in an official capacity to give to them of what was, what's been shared.
Well, you can certainly use that. Cindy's comments were much more eloquent than mine. But it's just not, it's just not the same. What they offered is very nice, but it's just not the same. I don't see where it's comparable for what you were asking in the first place.
I, I don't.
At all.
I don't.
So.
If we're going to have a DDA, it has to all operate under the same rules. You can't have.
Yeah.
You can't have this hanging over your head. Because I can tell you, if you expand, if we expand, you're going to need somebody to help you. There's a lot that's going to need to be done, and grant writing and everything that they have requested assist with. How are we going to do it without taking away from what we can do in the current DDA? I don't know.
It's always good business if you can ask for $50,000 worth of services and only pay five grand.
I know.
I mean, I don't think any of us would. The work that goes in behind the scenes. I mean, we all remember, at least most of us remember Alpena prior to our DDA and all the hard work that has gone in over the years and look what we have now. You know, I'm certainly proud of the downtown and the expansion and all the works to get hotels down here and, and different buildings and such. There's no argument there. I agree with what Mayor Protem has. has presented, you know, and her concerns, my concerns as well. Having dealt with the other municipalities or the government agencies on Target's board, we run into the same roadblocks at times, you know, where there's, we want a lot of work, but we don't have a lot of money, you know? So it's, it's one of those concerns, but I think if we look at long-term, we, we can see, we look at what our history has been, we can see what the benefits of the DDA is going to be and what, you know, it's amazing to me how much grant information or grants that are going to be, because they are part of the DDA. So. While I agree with that, I, I think that, you know, we are making a step in the right direction. I, I think the expansion will be good for the entire Alpena community. I mean, right now, when people think of downtown, they think of Second Avenue. And I mean, when I was a kid growing up here, that was never downtown. Downtown was Chisholm, you know, so that expansion to me just made sense and still does. So it's kind of where I'm at.
But we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. And I appreciate the long-term, long-term view of this. And I think that's been something that's been difficult is that education to the county commissioners of, of what exactly we do and what the value is that it serves other areas of the county, whether they see it or not.
Can't, if they just, they just have to come visit us. Just, it's, it's beneficial. It is beneficial. It has to, it has to. They can't say, we're going to pass this on to the next people. Maybe they'll do it, maybe they won't. I mean, the, the board that was here when they approved the original DDA approved it because they understood the benefit. And that's what you do. And if there's not a benefit and it's, and it doesn't work out, this board actually can say, we're done. We're the only ones who can revoke it. No, I'm not saying that we would.
Right.
Because we know the benefit, but there is a benefit to it. There just is. But it has to be same rules for everybody.
All right. Thank you for the.
No problem. Thank you guys for the feedback.
I'm sorry.
You said that they can get to 1.98 special assessment reimbursed to them. Does that automatically get reimbursed to them or do they have to apply for it?
So Beckett and Raider said that in other communities, they had to like stop in and request it and then they would get it. So it wasn't like we'd automatically just send a check back.
So. We're, we're talking about an area that has already voiced their concerns concerning this taxation cycle. And I, I, I don't see how they're going to go along with this.
Actually, we haven't heard from any of those specific residences.
That are still in the district, right?
Here. The ones that we've heard from are residents that are now no longer part of the expansion.
But, but, okay, I would like to hear from these individuals.
Well, then they've had, they've had ample opportunity to come in and, and I don't.
I know, I'm just saying that. Whether they would know that they have to apply for it themselves to get it back. The factors like this. Granted, I, I would imagine it's not that large amount of money, but I mean, I don't want the property values are with that areas like this. The, the other factor that I have here is we have a number of parcels along Chisholm Street that could see multimillion-dollar developments. I mean, we already know one with the old Habitat humanity spot like that. Concern that I have for that, and maybe we can come up with some sort of agreement or negotiations to it like this. The tax capture, how long, how much? Percentages like this, that's what I would like to see in here because I, I don't, for multimillion-dollar properties, it's like this, I don't see us not getting any tax benefit for a 30-year period. Okay? Because that's a lot of services, if you will, on those kind of properties. And you've got the, the Buffalo Man, the, the laundromat, that milky place that's a large place that you could put a fairly expensive place up on. There's an Eric, the open spots you got down there, the old big boys, right on the river. Those have potentials for a fair amount of tax dollars that come in. And so I'm just looking, I know what we did with what Noah, I think it was, there was a, a percentage deal worked up on something like this. I'm not quite, don't know exactly for how long that period of time was, but that's, that's my two big concerns there is, is the private property people and that we benefit also for the future of, I wish we hope, multimillion-dollar parcels out there.
Yeah, and that is an option too. Like you said, like with the Fletcher Paper Mill, that's on a 25% capture. Obviously, nothing has really happened there. So it was maybe a little preemptive, but that is something with certain parcels, you know, you could take that approach if you knew that something was going to be built and you wanted to do a tax split, that would just have to go into our plan. So that is an option on the table. But on the flip side, some of those projects won't happen if they're not in the DDA. So. Yeah.
Someone gets the opportunity to buy those three spots there where Buffalo Man and so I guess that's a big piece of property that they merged all together to put something on it. I'm not sure what they would put on there, but yeah, I'm not a developer, type of thing like this. But I, I just don't want to cut ourselves out of services, tax dollars.
Right.
So if that could be somehow figured into this, I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah. So I will stay here.
Stay for the 2023 alleyway closure request.
So the closure of the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue last year was a success. The closure and the additions of tables, benches, planters, and large concrete barriers from the city all contributed to more people using the alleyway as a gathering space and businesses using it for outdoor dining, the social district, and live music. Back in November, I organized a meeting with stakeholders and business owners along the alleyway. Rachel and Steve were also in attendance. Some of the key pieces of feedback that were discussed were that the past year's closure was success with minimal traffic attempting to drive through the alleyway. Keeping access in the middle of the alleyway, including the handicap spaces behind the center building worked well. Bunches and tables were frequently used. And then top priorities for this year include hanging string lights between the center building and noise and toys. The DDA has a $1,500 community impact grant through the Community Foundation that will go towards this purchase. And this is something that both those property owners really advocated for. Adding additional and more flexible tables and chairs for dining and then adding more music such as the Alpena Street performers on Friday evening, and then developing a plan for year-round closure through the fall and winter. After a meeting with Rachel and Steve earlier this spring, we are requesting the closure of the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue from May 26, 2023, which is the Friday before Memorial Day, through November 1st. We anticipate returning to council in the late summer with a proposal to extend the closure through the winter months, pending a plan for snow removal and more permanent infrastructure for closure such as bollards. Additionally, I've been working with the owners of the Black Sheep, who would like to use the alleyway next to their building for additional outdoor dining space. Because this alleyway is used for deliveries during the day, we are requesting its closure start at 4:00 PM each day through those same dates. And then the Black Sheep staff will coordinate moving planters and seating into the alleyway when they close and then remove them when they close for the evening. And I have talked to all the business owners that would be affected around, and none of them had any issues. Only one business uses that alleyway, so they said as long as stuff is gone by the morning, that, that, that they won't have any issues with that being disrupted in the evening. So thank you for the support of this project that will benefit downtown businesses and create another gathering space in our downtown. I did include just some additional information about what's proposed. And then the request from the city in addition to the closure would be to place the large cement barriers in the parking spaces and then at the alleyway entrances on Second and Third, and then to place two trash bins in the alleyway in that section as well. And then no trash bins or barriers are needed for the Black Sheep alleyway. We will work with them on the planters and some additional seating in there.
Any questions or issues or?
I don't.
Sounds great to me. Anybody? All right.
So I move we approve the alley closings as per. Or.
Mayor Walgore?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Mayor? Before we move into closed session, can I ask Attorney Piper a question?
Oh, listen, I said.
There's some information that came to light on a previous agenda item in today's agenda. Can we revisit that or should we bring it back next meeting?
I would suggest we bring it back at the next meeting.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss, one, the appeal of the Michigan Tax Tribunal concerning the county Alpena equalization study, number two, water and sewer litigation.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Walgore?
Hi.
Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're gonna open session and bill if you'll just recite your opinion about.
The, the motion would be, a motion to allow the city attorney to file a full Michigan Tax Tribunal appeal challenging the Alpena County Equalization Study as it relates to the industrial class of property in the city. So moved.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Go to third.